Start the recording. Policy committee. I don't know how y'all have been doing policy committee this last month, so.
We've not probably been doing it quite as well as you do, but we stumbled through it. Because they made me be in charge of the that keyword.
Alright, so we're on twenty-five twenty, are we? What are we doing with it? Because I don't want to just.
Um, twenty-five twenty. Oh. Well, we started. So we started and then we stopped because when you were here that, I don't remember what committee, policy committee meeting it was.
Agreed.
Amanda had asked about the doing a workshop with the board so that, and then that got vetoed. And so then I was asked to bring the.
The language, right.
So where it says supplemental materials approval process, I think that would all kind of come out. And that's where that, that policy that went last, the language last night would go in. So we kind of just stopped because we.
Okay, so.
We struggled.
I guess we could do one of two things. We can rename this curricular and supplemental if we keep away from calling everything that's not a science textbook. Curricular, because I think everyone's gotten familiar with supplemental curriculum being the books and the other stuff. So that it's inclusive, or we have to stop using the word supplemental curriculum. And everything's curriculum unless it's a learning material. So.
My vote would be core curriculum versus supplemental curriculum. Because core is our core adoption, supplemental is anything to enhance. That's how like textbooks would like, you read books about curriculum, like from a curriculum specialist standpoint. That's, they don't necessarily just say learning materials, I mean, they are interchangeable.
Okay.
But when they will talk about like a true textbook adoption, they will say your core. And then they use the other supplemental, so it really is a semantic. Do you want to say learning material or supplemental or?
Okay, but I don't know if it's semantics because that was kind of one of the struggle points with this whole thing. Being that, you know, going back to the beginning of time, I guess, with why is the board approving supplemental curriculum? But the reality is the law doesn't differentiate curriculum and supplemental curriculum, it's just curriculum. But then now we have learning materials and the language within the learning materials realm doesn't imply that it's supplemental curriculum. It's learning materials that are utilized to enhance the curriculum.
So we can call it learning materials if that's easier.
Call it learning materials.
Anything that is used above and beyond the curriculum to enhance.
I don't know about that because if the reading materials, the novel sets that are used and taught in the classrooms. If that is a learning material, not curriculum, then that's kind of a dicey road because that needs to be approved. So that's why I'm saying we can add, because someone, I'm assuming it was you, did all this red supplemental materials approval process?
No, I was Lisa.
That was, that was all, that was all of us together kind of talking about it. But, but we got hung up because, and the reason we got hung up.
Yeah.
Is, um, there are things that we have had or that we use that if, that we couldn't figure out how to put, how to create this. This, that's why we got, so we got stuck. We couldn't figure out how to create this in a way that isn't going to require us to inundate the supplemental curriculum committee with literally tens of thousands.
No, 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 I understand that.
I would argue too that when we're talking about novel sets versus, I'm going to use the wording materials because I like that one better. Novel sets are what you're teaching, that is curriculum, that is not supplemental, that is not learning. A learning material is what would supplement that novel set. So if the novel set gets the approval of the board through its adoption process, then any worksheet, activity, or lesson that the teacher then comes up for that book would be what supplements that, becomes the learning material. So the novel set itself is not a supplemental material, that is the curriculum. So that's where things got a little, I think, into the weeds here because when we talk about, and I keep bringing it back because I'm wanting to keep it very clear. I've been approved to teach a particular curriculum.
Right.
And I know the policy is associated with things I'm allowed to and not teach in the classroom. Any learning material that I bring in to supplement that or enhance is going to follow the same policy and procedures as what has already been approved, which is why I asked in the very first meeting that things like that just fall under that umbrella and under that heading. And then we got off in two different directions and how everything needed to be viewed or had eyes on or whatever the case may be. And then we started really talking about what that looked like and what that would mean for Lynn's position and for the supplemental materials, which is why we then started changing the wording. This is what reason I think that we stopped this was because this got so ridiculous, we're getting so nitpicky on. Okay, so if we do this, then what's this?
So deep in the weeds.
If A then B, if B then C, if C then D, and then what does that all look like?
Right.
You know, and we had Shonda here with a huge stack of learning materials to bring to Lisa. I know that, let's say it was the last day of school, going through her binders and trying to go through everything and making sure that she had everything ready to go for the board in July, so I'm guessing she could start teaching in September with no hiccups. I know there were a number of us that were waiting just to kind of see what happened at last night's board meeting and then with the language that you, I think, were going to try to have added to this. So I think we're getting into this area that we just won't be able to do our job the easiest way possible. But also making sure that we are.
A hundred and twenty percent understand what you're saying. But where I struggle is we have selection, adoption, use, and removal of curricular materials as the title. We then talk about supplemental curriculum and then we have a form that says request for review and reconsideration of learning materials. And then there was a policy that was about learning materials, which we got a snippet last night for language to add. So all I'm trying to do is make some clear consistency so that everything flows. Because what doesn't flow, there'll be a boulder and they'll have this big runoff and it'll be a big thing. So I'm just trying to figure out what's the most reasonable approach to addressing. Because either we stop having supplemental curriculum and everything's curriculum. But I hear what you're saying, that curriculum is technically the core and everything else that's outside of it is supplemental. But then when, if we're taking supplemental curriculum and making it learning materials, then we need to identify that in the sense that I, I think it's.
Different cat even.
Yeah, so.
I guess I, the sense that I get is, um, if we are, so think about what we did for ELA for high school. They did not want to do an adoption, they did not want to do a curriculum, a textbook adoption because they felt like their anthology. So that would be the book that has all of their short stories. They were actually reading the novels supplanting that anthology. So they have the anthology as a reference, technically that anthology is considered the core adoption. But instead they're just reading the little excerpts from the book, they actually have the book and they're reading it. So to her point is that novel is supplanting the core, so if we're talking about supplanting, then that is curriculum. If they found a worksheet attached to that novel that they wanted to use, that would be a learning material. So what I think everybody is saying is that novel would be approved by the board, that anthology would be approved. But a worksheet that is enhancing that or differentiating or allowing them to provide additional exposure, that would be learning material and that would not go through supplemental, is I.
That's exactly yes.
So, yeah.
That was very succinct. At risk of not repeating everything that happened last night? What happened at the board meeting? Was that approved to, like, was the language that?
It was a discussion item, I took it as a discussion item just so the board could see it. And then Michelle just, because this isn't the policy, it's just a little snippet of what we wanted to include in the policy. Michelle just recommended that then we take this to this meeting and figure out how to put it in the policy and then the board will approve, that will have the opportunity to approve or deny the policy, so that's where we are. I'm just trying to, I don't, I don't see the language here.
They're not.
So.
It was, it.
The document with your language.
Oh.
That I, I don't know.
I will, Maria, can I just, can I share this document from last night's board meeting? You can link it in there so she can.
Yeah, or I can just open up the, um, the, um.
What?
Agenda construction form and then just pull it from there.
Perfect.
Nope.
This is the document that we share with Maria, so just so you know, Michelle, when, when we provide the links for her, this is where she, we go to, we share this. So all the links are there.
It was discussion, yeah. It was a discussion.
It was, yeah.
What kind of medicine does it want to do?
He doesn't know. So we'll see.
I have somebody who's doing a lot of surgery, so that, yeah, he doesn't say at this point anything.
Did you look at that agenda item?
Which one?
The one that we're looking at with, because with the, just some of the information from the attorney. From the board meeting.
No, I did not.
Was it, do you want to look at it just so you can see it? This is what I presented, I reached out to our attorney to just get some clarification, so.
Two fingers, we'll scroll up, scroll up and down on the pad.
Oh, god.
It's not a touchscreen.
Like my kid, maybe that's why I can like. Whenever I have a student that has his own device and I try to do that, I'm like, it's not touchscreen. It's just two fingers. Nothing was happening.
Yeah, and I just watch it scroll, like, it's, the first time you do it, it's weird, and then you're like, okay, it's easier than I thought. Yeah, so you just have to have two fingers touching it.
That's good.
Yeah.
It was a policy.
It was policy twenty-five thirty, it's the one that we combined.
Okay, so that's why I'm like, where is?
I did, because did we put three policies together in one, so that's part.
We didn't, ISBA put two together and then we combined an additional one.
Yeah, so that's, that's why it's, there's so much in there. Didn't we, didn't we do a link to this one though in favor of these?
I don't know if we already, I know we talked about them, but then.
Because I, I know you and Lynn both said you liked these better, who says it linked in, the law and everything. She wishes she, and then I thought we were getting rid of President's piece because we put the three of them up.
But she, yeah, but I don't, yeah, but I, I think we talked about it, but I don't know.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Yeah.
Just because it doesn't say learning materials here, and I know that was something Michelle was having.
I think we just have to, yeah, what the terms are going to be and then we. If we decided to add that piece, we'd be gearing up all of those pieces, like we'd still outline the supplemental process because there would be.
Wait a minute. Oh, no, 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 okay, it's just up here, I'm sorry, I was distracted. Okay, nevermind.
It's just a bad.
So literally, if we were adding these, what would we have done?
I was saying we would, we would kind of be shifting our initial. And then now we just need to work on the vocabulary so it's not overlatch and it's too clear.
Okay. We could say, uh, instead of this, what if we retitle it something to the extent of.
Yeah.
Educational.
Right.
Materials.
And again, this was how it was been titled from ISBA and how this one has been done for years, so we can.
Can we call it instructional materials?
We can make it whatever we want, but my, my, because we're going through these, these definitions, we have curriculum, we have curricular materials, we have supplemental materials, now we're going to have learning materials, audiovisual materials. Which I think is great because it's a resource for parents to be able to say, oh, here's their definition of this and what's expected.
But we may then need to differentiate out some of the things that we have under supplemental materials and then move them into that secondary learning materials definition. We were trying to be all inclusive of all those things that could be, so.
So we'll just, once we figure out what the title is, and then I think we just have to go through each one of those lines and decide what we want.
What falls under which. I'm trying. I mean, I don't know. Education and instruction materials.
Are this instructional materials?
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's all encompassing, it's everything we use for instruction.
So then curricular materials, would you just say are defined as textbooks or core instructional materials? And then.
Well.
And all, everything included with the adoption, yep, that's all accurate.
And supplemental, ASAP, this is the one that we're going to have to, three, four, and five is where we have to, because I still feel like, um, this is getting really technical, but you know, instead of supplemental, is it supplanted materials? Is it, um, because that's what we're talking about.
Materials that take the place of the original curriculum.
Would be what you are going through the, our current process for approval. Where, and we're saying that that still would be in play.
So supplanted curricular materials?
Yeah, but that's not really a technical word.
Because we're still talking about things like, like in the drama department, they're.
Unless we define, sorry, unless we define supplemental materials as materials that supplant the core curriculum. If we define that, that way then learning materials become something else.
Find a better way of doing it than that was already good.
Learning materials are enhanced and supplemental are supplanting. Yeah, because if you're doing a play, that's a supplemental, it would go through the approval process. A book that you're using in place of something, in place of your core curriculum or it stands in.
Yeah.
Anyway, I feel.
Always thinking about, yeah, I guess tier one materials, I mean, I guess it could be anything though. Trying to think like umbrella kind of terms.
Do you have toenails?
That's your sneakers? Oh, no.
One foot is.
The first time I saw a student wearing that, I wanted to look it up.
No, I don't think so.
By the district's professional employees, aren't we all professional employees? I mean, shouldn't it be certified teaching staff?
Uh, yeah, when we, when I.
That was ISBA's language.
No, it was actually Amy's, Amy White's.
So comprehensive resources, we're not talking about anything like that, so what is she?
Curricular materials.
You can achieve using comprehensive as a core.
Yeah.
So then we move from number three down to number five, or do we just not even have to worry about that?
I think, I think we, if we're defining supplemental materials as materials that are being used to supplant the core curriculum, then that would be the definition, is what I think supplemental would be, if that's what we're saying.
But those items that are not being used to supplant, that enhance, then would be, okay, okay.
So I think number three has to just say something about supplanting.
So instead of supporting materials, it would be supplanting materials?
Because the learning materials are the supportive? Okay.
So any material that's used to in place of.
That would be a, I think.
Core curriculum. Is that maybe that first sentence of that supplemental? Right?
Would that help to, yeah, in the definition supplemental includes supplanted and, and learning materials include supporting?
Brilliant.
I don't know, I don't, I don't want to get supported, but that might help, but I don't like.
I think that number three.
I'm just kind of on the material. There's different fonts.
We need, oh, yeah.
Select all the change.
The first thing.
I hated when I did that like to an email.
I'm so tired, so that's all I can see.
Something from somewhere else in the email makes it like all different types of fonts that I don't.
Michelle will fix it though, but that's all I can see right this minute. Is it Quinn? Okay.
I hate that that door. I wonder if we were opening up early this morning getting bored.
Is the reason we have to have number five separate and not just in learning materials is because of that policy twenty-five seventy?
No, it was separate already, it was just below supplemental. And so I felt that in the spirit of consistency, learning materials supplemental, because this really isn't a definition in, so to speak.
Oh, yeah.
But it, but we can make it a definition. So learning materials are materials that are not board approved curriculum.
I actually think it doesn't need to be a definition because it could, it honestly could be one or the other depending on what it is. You could have it as a supplanted tool or a supporting tool. So I think it would go, it's truly how you're using it.
Board approved curriculum and not designed for the sole or primary instructional.
You know what I mean?
Well, there are any materials that are not board approved curriculum. I guess. And not designed for the sole or primary instruction, that does make sense.
As the sole, instead of for the sole. As the sole or primary instruction?
Or.
As the sole.
As, as the sole.
And then either use sole or primary, not both?
And not designed as sole or primary instructional resources. Are any materials that are not board approved curriculum and not designed, um, I don't think that.
To be sole or primary?
It's too negative, so it's fine. And not designed as.
To be the sole.
Sole or primary instructional resources.
A primary instructional resource.
Used. So any materials that are not board approved curriculum and not used as sole or primary instructional material.
Could we change it to are that, any materials that do not fall within the specified board approved curriculum? Because otherwise it sounds like these are living completely outside of what would honestly be approved, does that make sense?
That's what they are, they're living outside of everything that's approved.
Right, so how do we handle that then is my question, and so these then need to be approved if we're talking about?
No, so they're. There's more to the paragraph, I was trying to figure out how to make it a definition and flow with what's there and put all the rest of the information there as well.
Again, it would be that you're doing, you know.
To kill a mockingbird worksheet, that type of thing, but I still need to get that to you to so that everyone knows.
This helps. Kill a mockingbird is approved, and therefore anything that supports it is learning materials and it must be approved.
Okay, perfect.
I, I, I know what you're saying, Beth, because I kind of felt the same way when I first read this wording as well. I thought that kind of seemed strange, but then Lisa shared that that's kind of where the legalese and lawyer stuff comes into play, so.
No, I'm sorry I was late today, my daughter was in a car accident, so she's fine, she's fine, but I was like, I was going to be on time to this one, and then.
Yeah, no worries. Glad she's okay.
Yes, she is fine.
You could be home with her.
She's in Zula.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. She would like it if I was there with her, I can't.
So learning materials are materials that are not board approved curriculum and not used as a sole or primary instructional material. Learning materials may be used by the district's certified teaching staff to complement, enrich, or extend the content of curricular materials. Okay.
Okay, I just.
Go for it.
We do have paras that would use this from a.
But aren't the paras under the instructor, a certified teaching instructor?
They are.
And they're not.
The material was provided to them by the classroom teacher.
Right, so the certified teachers on the, on the.
I just want to throw that out there.
They'll be covered because it says certified teacher, I was, that's why I was curious.
Yeah, it's the teacher who creates it, that would be.
Right, I understand that, I just want to make sure that.
Do the paras understand that, that they're not creating these, that the, the teachers are creating them?
I mean, they, most of the teachers create their lessons, well, yeah, so, or they do it in.
Well, in most cases, even if you have a super, like, they're going to run it like a teacher, here's what I created, I think this would help. I mean, they do it in collaboration, I mean, your teachers are going to have eyes on it to say, yeah, this totally fits. It's great for this kiddo, they're working with somebody that is.
Well, and most, they're using a program typically.
It's almost always, yeah. It's almost always curriculum, curriculum materials that they're using.
Okay, here's one thing, but what happens when you have a librarian who is teaching kids how to use, um, format their, format their papers and how to safely use the internet and do, do they need to be covered under that?
But are you teaching a curriculum?
Not necessarily a curriculum, so to speak.
Putting something in front of them, you're just teaching them how to navigate.
Well, showing them, showing them how to correctly cite papers, do, do citing, you know, so having to show them that. So there are worksheets out there that help them like search the internet and cite papers.
That would fall under the same thing as a para, like, if you're doing to kill a mockingbird and they've been asked to write a paper about it and you're showing, showing them, that's all funded through the teacher, in my mind.
Okay.
But there are teachers at like the middle school that teach library use classes, don't have their skills to.
We did, not, we haven't done it for a couple of years, but I, that's not to say, I will have a library class again this year.
Okay.
So.
So then you can pre-sell for that.
So if I, yeah, if I decide, you know, depending on who the principal is that comes in and what they want me to do and what they want me to show the kids, it could just be reading, it could be doing, um, reading circles or, uh, to help get reading scores up. It could be show them how to navigate the internet, how to do formatting papers, doing all that kind of stuff. So I don't know, it's just going to depend on what they want us to do.
Kind of goes back to your desire, Michelle, to have a certified librarian and staff still.
Yeah. So, uh, I don't know, I mean, I think sending a kiddo to Alperdi works. I think sending a kiddo to Alperdi works. But, yeah. So what I did for learning materials is add any additional materials that are not board approved curriculum and not used as a sole or primary instructional material. I added the word additional because up under supplemental, it's supporting materials, so.
But were we gonna change supporting to supplanting?
Yeah.
Or no?
Yeah. Good. Yeah, I think you need to. Wouldn't it be supplanted materials as a plant?
Yeah, yeah, any materials used to supplant core curriculum.
So then, is curricular and the supplemental, those ones are board approved, but now we've created this learning materials that is supporting or whatever reason.
Like a worksheet, or if you had to, like, you needed to quickly, you're reading a story that's been approved and I need to show a child a picture of a meadow, cause they've never, they don't know the difference between a meadow and a field or whatever. You can quickly pull something up and it's, again, it's enhancing whatever main thing.
Or going to Shayna's example of the miner, when she was trying to demonstrate mining and she couldn't get it through their vision as to what that looked like, so she wants to show them a quick little video of what a gold miner would look like, well, if they were previous, that wouldn't be allowed at the moment.
So all core and supplemental would still go through the same process it's been going through.
Yeah.
Um, and then our learning materials would not.
And, and this, this shift really allows our teachers to not teach the textbook, but to be able to teach kids and make adjustments on the fly when they need to. Um, and that's what they've been struggling with.
So Michelle, I said for number five, audio visual, I don't know that you necessarily need it because in both the supplemental, the curricular, audio, video, visual is a part of that, and so I think at any given time, it could be used as a supplanted.
But, so the reason that that's there, you weren't, I don't think you were at that meeting, Lynn, and, um, Michelle, I know you're typing, but they were trying to differentiate what falls into policy twenty-five seventy, which is the video policy, and what would fall into an audio visual material that would be a learning material, so that's why that's, that's the only reason that that's there.
So if you put audio visual learning materials, then in the definition it would be are five minutes.
Long or less.
Yeah. Then that defines what we're saying is audio visual learning material versus video.
And merging it into four, number four, is that what you're saying, Beth? And then anything longer than five minutes will have to be, um, follows the video policy.
I just feel like what's listed in blue, I think we're saying the same thing twice and it's driving me nuts, I think the second section is more explicitive than, um, so documents or instructional material obtained from sites through the internet, um, applications, platforms, documents or instructional material obtained from sites through the internet. So I can add instructional. Software. Library materials or any other materials used to instruct students, I think that covers it.
Does that negate the learning materials though?
What do you mean?
Because it says are any materials used to instruct students now.
Maybe we should delete that one for that end.
Yeah.
But novels are in the curriculum material, that's why I don't understand, you've got novels in both places.
Because the idea is that.
Some novel says come with the curriculum was what we talked about last time, and then some are the teachers are selecting this novel.
And supplanting that, that.
Yep. And some, and most of the adoptions now they'll have an accompanying text that goes with it, that's part of the adoption process. But then we, we then have additional novels that we want to use to supplant that anthology, does that make sense?
So probably probably less likely at the secondary level. Cause they're, as long as they're approved for the ninth.
Well, and I would say most of your, um, what I look for you guys for ELA, yours doesn't really come with novels. If you have an anthology, they all do.
Okay. Yeah. So your elementary might come with an anthology and some class, that's of course.
Yeah, they always do. Where at high school they don't.
I mean, you'll get anthology, and then you choose to support it with full novels, so it's rather than just the snippets.
I think the hard thing is we don't even really use the textbook.
So you use a lot of, your, yours is mostly supplemental.
If you are all that approved, as long as it's approved, not approved, then we're fine, then it supports the new learning materials.
Thank you.
Yeah, you don't have to have everything approved that supports it, just nice.
Just the novels itself?
But we're still saying, um.
So what about the top supplemental materials are any materials used to supplant, um, core curriculum instead of classroom instruction?
Okay, anthologies come with their classes.
Curricular material, here you go.
And then that's where the any materials used for student instruction, that's where it bleeds into learning materials is the problem, right?
Yep.
If we didn't have learning materials separately.
Well, you could still use your student instruction if you put something like for primary student instruction.
And say you use the same wording you used down below where it was the sole or primary instructional material?
Yeah, so.
So like at number four, where you used, that they're not the sole or primary, I might use that same language.
Already materials used for primary, sole or primary.
Instruction.
Instruction.
Right, so you put, yeah, probably at the, just at the bottom, Michelle, the very last line there.
Right here?
Yeah.
For sole or.
Because then the bottom one says that's not, so that it continues.
It's consistent that way.
I don't have any. Okay.
I'm sorry.
I'm with you, I, I have the same way, I see.
I can't find it anymore. I'm sorry.
Like my, that's my teacher's superpower, I can walk by and see what's on the page. Unfortunately, things are also sadly inappropriate things I could do.
Okay. I like the slide.
Textbook?
This page is. Alright, so then audio visual materials that are five minutes long or less fall within the parameters of this policy. Anything longer than five minutes would fall within the parameters of policy twenty-five seventy.
But going back to that, what, five minutes or less fall within the parameters of learning materials or under, I mean, when it would be learning materials, because it's not supplanting instructional.
Right, and I, uh.
So you might need to clean that wording up.
But I think we have for, um, I think you kind of, it's in all three of those, cause it says, under two, it says audio and video clips, which would be curricular materials, um, in the supplemental materials.
But so I guess if you adopted a curriculum that had videos with it, thinking history would be a, they might have thirty minute videos, but if it's adopted and approved, it doesn't matter if it's five minutes, it's approved.
Right, right.
Doesn't apply to number two.
But I still feel like you would do twenty-five seventy if it was thirty minutes, because that's just about notifying parents.
Yeah.
It's not about approval, twenty-five seventy isn't about approval, it's about parents.
Just letting parents.
It's parent notes, so I don't feel like, even if it was adopted, you'd still follow the movie policy.
Yeah, and then, and, and that part of that, when we, when we did that was just, um, we were ha, we were having situations where we had some classrooms where kids were watching a lot of videos, and so this policy kind of allows parents to have an idea of how much that's happening, and then also there's a requirement that principals are aware of what is going on, just so that we're not just showing videos, so.
Some boundaries.
Mm-hmm.
For number four, where the second sentence where it says learning materials may be used, should it be are used, or does it not matter?
Some teachers may not do any extension and might just follow the textbook.
It kind of reads, I know maybe I'm just overreading it, cause we've been working on this policy forever. But it kind of reads like, they may be used to complement, or they may be used to not complement, I don't, you know, you see that way.
It's like a may or may not.
Right.
Where are you at?
The second sentence of number four.
Okay. If they may be used to complement.
And you're saying that learning materials are used by the district certified.
To complement.
Or teacher will be permitted to use.
Cause if that's the point of it, that they're already approved things, and so this is just, I don't want to say supplemental. Additional material, yeah, exactly, then that's what they are used for, right?
Yeah.
And I, I'm all that same rage, cause I, it's some of this language, I'm like, but it makes it sound like maybe.
Right, right. All my time in law school though, you know, that's. Alright, so any learning materials, any additional materials that are not board approved curriculum and not used as a sole or primary instructional material by the district certified teaching staff to complement, enrich, or extend the content of curricular materials. It's a long sentence, but not as long as some other ones. So, does that read cleaner, any additional materials that are not board approved curriculum and not used as a sole or primary instructional material by the district certified teaching staff to complement, enrich, enrich, or extend the content of curricular materials? Is that cleaner?
Okay, what about just taking out, I forget too many, but what about taking out curriculum after board approved, because the board isn't necessarily approving the standards? Because if we're defining curriculum above as our standards, how about just saying any additional materials that are not board approved? Because I feel like that makes it more wordy, and it's like, what is board approved curriculum again, I went back there.
Yep. I still kind of just struggle with that language, because just having that not board approved in there bothers me, because it feels like we're doing something that hasn't been approved by the board, but we are doing something that's being approved by the board, it's just, we're using materials that haven't necessarily gone.
Do not require, could you, is that do not require board approval?
No, because then you have to identify what doesn't. We're going down a slippery slope there again.
Let's just leave it at that.
We'll leave it, yeah. We'll go with, we'll, we'll do that.
Leave it alone. We can address that in the comment section.
In twenty twenty-five, don't worry, so she was talking about learning materials next summer.
So then does this whole thing stay?
No.
I think the hot gun goes by.
Unless we want to just define what, I think it might be good to define what the supplemental process is, that parents are aware of them.
So if we state learning materials, um, are, oh, it's blue. All other materials, I don't know, I'm not that crafty, are all other materials that are not board approved and not used as a sole or primary instructional material by the district certified teaching staff to complement, enrich, oh, now we're taking negative to a positive, that's weird. Okay, let's just drag that. These materials are used to complement, enrich, or extend the content of curriculum.
Yeah, it's better, yeah.
It's much better, yeah.
I was, I was struggling with the positive, negative, positive.
Yeah, that's, I was like, wait a minute. Okay. Any other comments or?
So do we need number five in there?
Or is that all just addressed in policy twenty-five seventy? I feel like, I wasn't here for that meeting and that discussion, so to me, that hangs me up without diving more into twenty-five seventy, but that's just, I don't think.
I don't think number five is necessary, because I think if, you know, the parameters of the movie policy, if you know the movie policy, then you know what needs to be made, known, whatnot.
Cause otherwise, are you guys saying that the number five things would fall into number four things?
Could, could be number four, could be number two.
Could be.
It could be number three. It could be in any of those. What we, what they were looking for was when do we need, be, when do we need, when do we send it home as a video or a movie or whatever?
Right, but that would apply no matter what.
Yeah, exactly, so.
I think if this identifier is on here, um, and maybe we don't.
I said maybe we don't remember, if it's not a definition, it's just an explanation.
Yeah, it's just, it is, yeah. Five go away.
Just twenty-five seventy, what defines it as five minutes or longer, is that how that, is that why five minutes was chosen?
Well, I think five, that, that was just kind of a random timeframe, I think that was thrown out there.
I think what we were talking about was like, most short little video clips are in less than five minutes, and then.
It stands out and.
If it's more than five minutes, it's typically more of like a plot and some context, and so that's kind of what we were talking about.
We're just making it all up.
What was the number on that?
At least half of the committee must be comprised of persons. Is that a squiggly line? Okay. Must be. Person, just, I like that better, other than public educators and trustees, and shall include parents of a child or children attending school within the district. All meetings of the committees shall be held in open session and, and we do notice.
But it's literally statute.
Right, curricular materials adoption committees. We have more than one. Uh, will be responsible for recommending textbooks and core instructional materials for consideration by the board. The function of the committee is to ensure that materials are selected in conformance with Idaho content standards and established district calls and objectives, recommendations will be made, and the final decision rests with the board, any persons may submit written objections to any curriculum materials under consideration. For dual credit courses offered through institutions of higher education, the selection and adoption removal of curriculum materials is handled by the provider. The district has no control over the selection and adoption and removal of curriculum materials, and it is the responsibility of the parent to have knowledge of and or review such materials prior to student enrollment. Curriculum materials selection and adoption, the curriculum materials adoption committee will evaluate materials based on a set of select criteria. The board is legally responsible for approving and for providing the necessary curriculum materials used in the district. Textbooks and instructional materials shall provide quality learning experiences for students and include the following. Enrich, support, align, and enforce accuracy with curriculum, stimulate growth of knowledge, appreciation, be congruent, um, present varied viewpoints, issues within the content standards, align with board policies, ensure usability for teachers and students, provide material. Ensure usability for teachers and students, provide materials for scaffolding and supports for differentiation and provide viable assessment tools to support data-driven instructional decision. Use of curriculum materials. Curriculum materials shall be made available for student use. That's a good thing. Students will not be charged for normal wear. Students will be charged for unreasonable damage to excessive wear and lost materials. The school librarian will maintain records necessary for the proper accounting of all curriculum materials. Use of supplemental materials. Supplemental materials enhance the coherence of the total curriculum without supplanting.
But that's got to change.
I can change the actual definition and just put it right there. I mean, you go back a little bit, but. And title this learning materials?
No, this is supplemental.
This is maybe supplanted.
And we kind of just followed what our current practice is right now. I don't know if we have to get to the meat of that now I do what people form or success, but I don't know if that matters, but.
And now this school librarian at elementary levels will be, right, that'll change.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to make sure they have access to the.
The records. The maintaining of the records.
Yeah, there's a, there's a software component that's specific to textbooks.
Yes.
So you're just deleting it off?
Well, we also, we have to make sure that that's.
Well, it doesn't matter.
It's not a big.
So supplemental materials.
Do it since they don't barcode their textbooks, so it's going to be there. We already have this.
Because I'm tired and I have to do it this way. Because I'm not smart enough to think outside the logs. Alright. A teacher may utilize supplemental materials as part of the course of instruction or refer students to utilize supplemental materials for educational purposes and as part of the education process. Are we missing a period right before your cursor? Probably. Okie doke. The process of approving, this is a different call, this, this.
This, this we, is what we currently do and that would stay.
Teacher's supplemental.
Well, we probably should read it because we, yeah.
The process of approving supplemental materials is as follows. Teachers submit materials for approval to the assistant superintendent.
Superintendent? I hear that.
Strike through assistant. Requested materials list is electronically shared with the supplemental materials committee to solicit its, to solicit feedback. All feedback is provided to the school board for consideration. The LJSU board of trustees, let's just, let's just say board. The board approves, denies the requests presented. Assistant superintendent will notify the teachers and principals of the result of their request.
Something toward me. And principals, the outcome of the request, I don't know. Maybe it's fine.
I'm just thinking. Okay.
Or just notify the teachers and principals of the board's decision?
Even better. Simpler.
What is that?
Notify the teachers and principals of the board's decision. And this next part we can, you can just delete because we were trying to figure out how to get the learning material part in there, so.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, we're all figured.
So, use of.
That would still be. But then we're taking out the use of video clips, right? That whole part is taken out.
Yep. Well, yeah.
Because that falls under the others.
Is that protocol stated in the video? Because this is a protocol, not a.
That policy.
I need to get better chalked up, so sorry.
Because it, it actually talks about.
So this is where you're saying, every single, all the video clips are more than five minutes. They're less than five minutes and they don't have to put them on their syllabus, then we don't need this.
Uh, in the fall, comma.
Thank you.
Such an English teacher, Beth.
It's always the commas too.
Commas too, yes, they matter. Because you might be eating Bob or you might be eating with Bob, but it just depends. Let's eat Bob, let's eat Bob.
I appreciate that.
My favorite though is the published one that Rachel Ray did. You guys seen that mistake? She's cooking her family, her dogs, and something else.
Oh, she's vicious. The novel sets, that is just what's used for like instruction, not read aloud, right?
Correct, yeah.
Like as a unit instead of read aloud.
I don't like. I guess I'm, uh, we need protocol or can we just say process?
Yeah, well, this is process.
And maybe we, maybe the process goes in the admin guidelines and, I mean, we're being very detailed in the policy. So maybe all of these processes and protocols go into.
A procedure?
Yeah, because this is a policy where we try to be very distinct about the policy. Does this and your protocols and procedures when those change and. Exactly.
So even the above defining the supplemental, um, I mean.
Process.
It could be a procedure attached to this policy.
I love that.
I already have all that written down, but just there, no one else has that, so it would be a public procedure, but not attached to the policy.
And we just made that all up when we were, when you were, sorry. So I don't even have to strike it.
We didn't make it up.
One meeting, but as far as like, but as far as like adding it. So I don't know if you need to cross it out, strike it out, or just get rid of it because it wasn't ISBA, it wasn't our form.
Right, no, I understand.
Yeah.
But we.
Go ahead.
But are we going to put that into procedure? So do we just need to copy and paste it into our procedure?
So that we don't lose it.
I think we're gonna, I, I feel like you're saying we're making one up.
Oh, well, you know, don't want to make things out, so we just need to have it.
Stack handbook.
Where can procedures go?
Oh, we could put it in our stack handbook.
So the regular couple usually gets placed in our handbooks, right?
So where do you want me to copy and paste this to?
Are the patrons?
I don't know.
Do the patrons have access to it?
An email to Lynn, it sounds like, is where I was getting this.
Can we create a link on the agenda for today that says, um, processes and procedures for twenty four, twenty five, twenty? And create a document that we can just paste it into and it goes on there and then you have access to it? No?
Come here.
I don't have access to that document or I would do it. I don't have access to that agenda construction document.
I guess I just, the reason I said you just, we just make a twenty five, twenty procedure is because like we have a movie policy. Like we do have procedures and let's just say that I leave.
Right, she's just asking you where she, where she.
I don't, I don't know.
She just needs to put it in a document that you have access to, is all I'm saying. So do we put the document in the agenda construction document so that you can get to it? That's all I'm asking you.
Right, but then where, what do we do with that, I guess?
We're going to create a protocol or a process.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
That's where I was confused, what, when it gets.
Procedure, we're going to create a procedure.
And is it going to be twenty five, twenty procedure? Is it just going to be a, I have a protocol, because I can make a protocol. Let's be honest.
I would think that parents might want to see what those procedures are for the approval of supplemental materials.
That's why I thought it would just be attached to this. Because like we have a, a movie procedure and then we have a form, it's like, so in my mind, it just, it all goes together so that they see the behind the scenes pieces of that process. Because I, every time we have a meeting, somebody asks me, well, can I do on the supplemental? And I'm like, all you have to do is email me, because I have it written down, but it's not public anywhere. I mean, so this is, not that people regularly go look at policy, but you know, at least it's written down.
Yeah.
And we could put, and we can actually.
Than ever before. We could put that, that language in the student handbook so that parents can see it and know what to expect.
That's actually a really good idea.
Love you, Lynn. That's when all of that's going to come to the student handbook.
I opt out of the student handbook and then I will go to the board policy, associate it with whatever, then I'll print that out. And then share it out.
And you said the student handbook, yeah. And staff.
Well, and our handbook, I feel like it's really good.
I do struggle a little bit with, when we went to the comprehensive one for all of school. We got rid of, um, dealt with attendance versus classwork and homework. So like when we have you said.
You guys could put that in your individual one.
Well, we haven't.
You can still put.
We used to. Maybe I'll talk to your admin. I'll talk to somebody down the table there.
Maybe.
Because we used to, if it was unexcused or not verified, then the student wouldn't get credit for the work because there was no.
That's a you question. Perfect.
I'll make it a me guys.
I'll make it a Shannon thing.
Shannon loves it when I come visit her in her office.
Attention standard coming my way, I'm so surprised.
What's up?
So funny, I get to deal with another attendance thing. We're so surprised, right?
Well, I think it could help solve some of my issues with attendance.
Michelle, you will share this with me very quickly, I'll just create a document that I can paste it into and share it with Lynn.
I have it, so you guys, I took notes, I'm good.
So we can, we can.
Strike through.
Okay, okay, good.
In following the flow of this policy, we have, we're re-titling it to instructional materials. So can I?
The only reason I left the twenty five, forty formally now twenty five, twenty, I just thought, um, when.
You're missing an I in instructional.
I know, I mean, sorry. Because we've been looking at a million policies, I just wanted all of us to remember where it came from. Right, so if you feel like we're good, we can take that off, but that's why I left it.
I don't mind it being left there. I, I think it's good until we were.
Right, that's what I left.
I just add it in the teaser.
Formally, formally, right, that's why I left it that way, but.
That's fine. So we have the definitions, we have curriculum materials, and we talk about the committee. And we talk about how things are selected and adopted. Okay, and then how they're used. Then we're going to supplemental materials. That said, use of supplemental materials. So supplemental materials will reintroduce the definition again. Um, and then the approval process, I think, may be necessary because. Yeah, we're up here saying this is how we get curriculum approved.
It's more context.
And so, um.
There's some consistency.
Yeah, but then.
And you don't have to do.
The protocols, what's that?
You don't, you're right, you're doing, yep.
Removal. Curriculum materials may be removed when the material is no longer meets the criteria, worn out, or has been challenged through completing a learning materials review and recommendation form.
So can we change that to.
Curriculum materials?
Yeah, yeah, um, instructional.
And then can we take turn, change that to twenty, uh, twenty F?
Yeah, hold on. And, there we go. About twenty five, twenty. Okay. But I think it should be, all materials can be subject for removal.
So would you just say instructional materials?
Right. Yeah. I would think, I mean, that way we're not having to differentiate.
So then supplemental, we'll get rid of supplemental.
So instructional materials.
Yeah, because any parent could come back and go, I'm not comfortable with this, I don't, whatever, but it wouldn't matter what it was.
Right.
Yeah.
It's fine, look at how we changed the title.
What do you mean?
Well, it's, so it's the instructional materials review and reconsideration and we have review and reconsideration of, in those two paragraphs, there. We didn't even catch that. Different names for the same thing.
Right.
Very similar.
That's really confuse people.
And in that one, and I don't know, I just know the teacher, I feel like they're, they're objecting to specific things that I'm using. I would prefer they come to me first. Why, why is that not in there? Like, address it with the teacher.
Well, if it's supplemental, it was a board approved, so do the same, right? This wouldn't be learning materials, if it was learning.
No, this is training instructional materials.
In, yeah.
Any materials that would be.
Yeah, this is anything that, so.
So instructional materials may be removed when the material.
No longer meets the criteria.
Yeah, thank you. Meets the criteria for initial instruction.
Should it say instruction and not selection?
No, initial selection.
Selection, yep. Is worn out or has been challenged through completing an instructional materials review and reconsideration form.
Weird.
I guess, I know.
Individuals objecting to specific materials used in the district are encouraged to submit a complaint in writing and discuss the complaint.
The building principal, I, I guess, if I'm using something in the classroom that one of my students' parents has a concern about, I would love it if they would address it with me first because.
Could you put teacher slash building principal? Because some people may not be comfortable, so, um. You know, if they don't know you.
Teacher and.
Classroom teacher and or.
Teacher and or.
I think people just like to go straight to the top and not look at the bottom first, so.
Prior to pursuing a formal complaint.
So into the instructional materials review and consideration form?
Except, so we're. We're saying, um, it's trying to maybe review, removed when the material has been challenged through complaint. Okay, so individuals objecting are encouraged to submit a complaint in writing, which is different than a form?
Like just. I feel like this paragraph should go above the removal. Because the idea is that, in my mind, it's just saying like if you have a concern, you're encouraged to submit a complaint in writing. And then if and when you want to formally challenge it, you use this form. So like a teacher, a parent could say like, I have a concern about this and they send an email to the teacher or the principal and then, you know, they can look at it and make an exception, but if you really, with the moment you're moving to a challenge, you want it completely removed. It's not just a matter of, I don't want my kid to have access, I want this removed because it, it, I, so I feel like it's, that's a leveled system, I guess. I don't know. Because you could, I mean, any parent could say, I'm not comfortable with this because of, you know, whatever reason, yeah.
And that shouldn't mean it needs to be removed right then.
That will just need to remove for that child, you know?
Right.
So, I mean, like, I'm trying to think of, you know, if you were to read a book and it's old jello and, but your dog just died and, you know, and that might not be at that time, the kids start.
Yeah, kids should know the book, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But that's when the book gets removed. Just means, could you buy a different book for my child? That makes sense, absolutely.
Yeah, so.
Well, then they're not formally challenging it. They're just.
Yeah, it's a situational kind of thing. So I feel like that's the, like, parents have that ability, but then they also have the ability, somebody can say, you know what, I don't think this is appropriate.
For any student.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because of, you know, crazy content.
Well, that's like, whenever we do our family tree stuff, I always give kids the option to just kind of do up the dishes, or I need it, or whatnot, because there's just so many dynamics, I don't, I want them to feel comfortable, for the level of purpose, it's just usually the one that's on.
Right. Which is like talking about Christmas, and when there's kids, they know, like, maybe, maybe getting anything, that's difficult.
Yeah.
Yeah. Learning materials?
Instructional materials.
Instructional materials, any one of those.
Stay back. The I M R R. The I M R R form.
Yeah, that's what we should do, let's make all kinds of- Yeah, and more acronyms in education, that's obvious, good idea.
We, we, we got that one.
That should be and, yep.
The document.
Education has too many-
We need more acronyms, yeah.
Okay.
So down below you have form twenty-five twenty F, and up above you have policy twenty-five twenty F, do which one do you want that to be?
Um, well, I'm, I'm not sure if we're done yet.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
I'm jumping over you.
It's not a problem, I'm just trying to, okay, so-
We're getting close.
The district shall have on hand and available to the public, oh, okay, so, all right, um, go ahead.
No, just in those two paragraphs that we've done with the red color?
Yeah, yeah.
You have policy twenty-five twenty F, and then you have form twenty-five twenty F.
Right.
Yep.
This sentence might make more sense if you had we saved for.
I just can't remember what we've done and passed another, where we've had an F and a P and all these stuff.
Well, we did go on the website and try to like get the procedure, put procedure, it's a form, put form, so I think we've been trying to correct that.
Okay.
So it is delineated out, cause people don't know, there's an accompanying block, so, no, not to say that it's perfect, but we have been working on this.
Perfect. I think this is how we do it, by completing form twenty-five twenty F comma. That's, I think, what we do, I don't think it's at the end, I think it's in the beginning. Instructional materials may be removed when the material- So we probably don't get the wrong hot ones, it's, it's been challenged, it's already been identified up there, right?
You probably, probably touch this out, right?
Being used in the district, don't get too excited, I'm just kidding.
The public has a right to inspect the instructional materials.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, I guess we want it to say instructional still, we're not changing that yet, okay, cause everything-
Yep.
They would just, I mean, is that a procedure? Is that a separate?
To inspect the instructional.
Okay, cause they request it through the principal.
No, um, every August, we set up the boardroom, and parents have thirty days to come in and review all of the curriculum available, any supplemental materials that are attached to that novel, that kind of a thing. We've been doing it now.
Right, but this also says that if she's got a learning material, that the parent is, wants to- Like, if they wanna, if they wanna say, I wanna view everything, what does that look like? That's what I'm wondering.
Join my Google classroom.
They would do that, but if you, if they saw something that maybe they were a little bit, hmm, wondering about, they might ask you to look at it, which they- Got to, yeah.
And that'd be helpful too, cause sometimes kids say things, and then the parent could just read them.
What was this? But for the workshop, we put all core out.
That makes sense, that covers most of it that they probably wanna see.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just wondering, yeah, I didn't know if they have the right to inspect instructional materials, it looks like.
They do.
Like, how that would look for all the things that have you.
Concern, maybe we come in and ask, maybe see something individually with you.
Easy, yeah.
Yeah.
It also gives them an opportunity to talk to you about, um, how, how's this used? Yeah, yeah. What was the conversation or whatever, so they have a better- So that's, that covers just by saying the right, that's, yeah, that's easy.
I think that happens sometimes in middle school, some of like the history stuff, just like, okay, how is this gonna be presented, they just wanna-
Yeah. Makes sense, I've had, like, a parent reach out, like, during Martin Luther King time, and so I was just curious about, like, if it says the right, like, oh, is that another form or process they have to follow?
All right, better. So the district shall have on hand and available to the public, the titles, authors, and publishers of all instructional materials being used in the district. The public has the right to inspect and review the instructional materials, with the exception of student tests.
Much better. Mm-hmm, yeah, that was-
Okay, so it can go down, so we still have, okay, perfect.
So then on the policy that was just approved, where there's that yellow, we'll need to make sure that these-
For twenty-five hundred.
So you got that, right.
Yeah, but it only says twenty-five twenty.
I don't know.
Is the open meeting law cross-referenced here because of the, um, the, like, the supplemental curriculum committee?
Well, I don't know, I think it's probably identified because it, up here, we're saying the committees have to be in an open meeting.
Okay, that's what I assumed, yeah, and duly noticed.
Yeah, we're gonna change the line.
Right.
For twenty-five hundred to twenty-five ten, if it says twenty-five thirty or forty, then it has to say twenty-five twenty of the ones that we've just approved.
I'm pretty sure I think it doesn't say-
Yeah, I thought you did already.
I'll double check, could you already?
Did you already go to the board? Okay.
It's in somewhere, okay, maybe it's up here.
Oh, yeah.
All meetings of the committee shall be held in open session and be duly noticed, okay.
And that's per state statute.
Right.
I just, I, I couldn't remember seeing that, and then I saw the cross-reference to the open meeting law, so I just wanted to make sure it was in there somewhere.
Okay.
So twenty-five twenty will go out for survey, we're not done yet, people.
But we're a step closer, we are a step closer.
Twenty-five twenty F?
That's the one.
Still want to look at it.
Right, okay.
We're just looking at it, though, we're not gonna do it.
I was gonna say, I think it should be easy, there's just more changes that need to match what we just did.
And there actually, I think there were a couple drafts to look at, the committee liked, um, well, and you know what? After going over this, these are specifically for, I mean, well, and it does say classroom, so yeah, I guess that does fall under it.
So we just have to decide which one.
Yeah.
So on this one, we change everything that says supplemental to just instructional.
Instructional, that's pretty straightforward, I think, and then it's colleges, yep.
And then the one titled objection form, it's just a different version, but we can decide if we use that.
Um, well, there was some discussion about if you were objecting per the new Idaho, uh, law around, uh, the obscene materials. We were, so that we weren't confusing it, cause that's a certain form, and then we were just, any normal challenge was a different form, so we had some discussion of, do you separate those out, are they the same?
The, the challenge is for the law, it's for the harmful to minors, and that's what, that's what that is. The objection-
Timeline for that.
Right, and, but the objection form is just any materials that are used in the library or in the classroom. So we just-
Could it all be the same form and just check whether or not you believe it violates, is that not possible?
We had to do, we had to do, we did two separate ones, um, because we linked in the law to the one, um, along with the policy.
I had it on one, but then there was discussion about separating what kind of-
We separated it, we did the separation out, so that's why there's two different ones, Melanie and I put together the other, put the other two together. Um, we thought it was a little bit more streamlined, and it was a little bit more, um, in the top.
And the other reason for that is in the law, if you go down, that's what they were talking about.
Only a parent, a rare child can-
Draft for twenty F, you were-
So it's like two separate forms. Right, so this one can be anybody, but this one has to be the parent, they have to, yeah, or the side of the child.
They, they took F one, and then separated it out to, so whatever.
With the library materials thing, my Bob, shouldn't the form for library materials be a form with that policy number, not twenty-five twenty?
Yes, it should.
It shouldn't, that was, I was like, wait, would one of them go with library?
Yes.
Shouldn't it be with twenty-five hundred?
But it's also-
For the one that was just approved last night.
But it's also classroom too, so you've gotta figure out, cause it's for library and classroom.
It wasn't, it, yeah, we, but I'm, but the library part was twenty-five hundred.
Well, if we give it as the library materials in this one, we can keep this as twenty-five twenty, but then change the other two that follow it, to twenty-five, or whatever.
It could be twenty-five hundred F, yeah, to go with it, and then just make sure the numbers on the bottom are all-
Yep, yep.
Because if there's-
That makes more sense.
Yeah, cause we didn't approve a form last night.
Right.
And so that form-
So we did twenty-five hundred, twenty-five ten, and then twenty-five ten P is what was approved last night.
So twenty-five twenty F one is the-
It would be just-
Twenty-five hundred, that, that one that, we, we named it. So we, see how we had, yeah, so we separated them out?
Yeah.
Um, because of the specific language in the library law.
Cause the library law is specific to a parent, their child, so we didn't want somebody to read that and just go, oh, well, then I can't do this, because somebody else, it doesn't-
Right.
You have both, and so we want it, you know, you can still challenge a book that doesn't under, we didn't want it locked into, it's only the definition of that harmful, but, you know, there could be other reasons why you objected, so that's why they separated it out.
Okay, so, I think what I'm trying to understand is, these two forms are specific to library books.
Correct.
Or class, or classroom, the library materials.
Or the library law.
Library curriculum.
She's trying to determine which one is the library law, cause she's, what she's saying is both of these forms are-
This one right here does mention, or classroom, so learning materials used in light school library or classroom, and then submit this form to the school librarian, so, that's where that-
So what, so what we need to do is change that, so that it aligns, and it's instructional materials?
Well, or we get rid of library on this form, change everything to instructional materials, keep this in conjunction.
I think this is, I mean, I think what Michelle is saying is, the one that ISBA has, it's, this is the one that, it's about curriculum, so it's not like, this one makes sense, and then the two that you have, we either, we either combine, or we have an F one that's attached to twenty-five hundred.
I don't think we need to, I, I think that we just, because this one actually takes care of library books that somebody wants to challenge.
Right, that's, that's why I said either combine whatever they have, in that they like language or whatever, yeah.
But we're saying this one here, if we change supplemental to instructional, should fit with the work we've done today, correct?
This is ISBA's recommendation per twenty-five twenty.
Yes. Like, this one should be pretty straightforward, to make the change should be done.
Cause otherwise you're locked into just library, and, I mean, you could challenge anything, not just a library book, you technically, parent could challenge any, anything, yeah. If they're not comfortable with it. Does that make sense?
So this might be either a ridiculous question, or a question we don't wanna go down the rabbit hole for right now. Our classroom library has been defined as, okay, okay, that's what I thought, I didn't think so. I wonder, cause that, we, I don't know if we have time to chat about that. That's totally fine, cause that's, that's what I wanna know, okay.
I have a recommendation for that, but-
Okay. So when it says school library, class, okay.
It's a good one, too.
And that should be-
It should be instructional.
And school libraries are, libraries who want students to access to.
Yeah, all of the registered supplemental should come instructional, and that's pretty much there. So, library versus classroom, whatever.
Yeah, that's where.
So Jack-
That's a whole other thing.
I mean, there's lots of parents here, but you're the one, as a district parent, does this make sense, what we're saying is, so if you, twenty-five twenty is about curriculum.
Mm-hmm.
So there's a challenge form for curriculum, and then-
Well, and it's curriculum supplemental and learning materials.
All learning materials.
Twenty-five hundred was the policy that was approved last, and it's just library, and then we have the challenge forms around library materials and the harmful per the law.
Right.
Does that make sense?
So, but, but what we're doing here is, is, this includes the law, this includes library.
Right, but then we have the harmful one.
Right, so the harmful one is only the harmful one, yes.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So this one will cover-
It's open to everything.
Instructional materials, so, which includes-
Everything.
But does instructional materials include library books in the other policy that we've been working on forever?
Yep, that was labeled, that was listed in there.
Okay, so then, yeah, that makes sense. So there's this form for basically anything under the sun, and then this other form is specific to the law.
Okay, yep.
Because the law is really specific about what you could challenge it for, and who can do it, yeah, and this one could be anybody.
Right.
I do the same thing, it's hard when you're sitting right there.
It is. Materials used in classroom instruction.
So that's learning materials, so we could just strike that.
One, two, and three, and you're done, we've covered everything within those, we'll look at those definitions of policy.
Yeah, library materials. Yes, stay.
Any materials to which a teacher might refer a student to as part of the course of instruction.
You don't need that last two, because you have to which on the front, which is actually the grammatically correct way to say it.
Any materials to which a teacher might refer a student as part of the course of instruction.
Right?
Okay, no, we're going this way, I don't like the way that reads. Okay, any materials, a teacher might refer a student, student to as part of the course of instruction, I took the to which out.
Right, but that was actually grammatically correct, you're not supposed to end it-
This is for the general public to read.
No, we're not supposed to have dangling prepositions.
With your present participle.
Any materials a teacher might refer a student to, um, to use as part of the course of instruction, and I think that's important, because we're saying the teacher is telling the student to use it, if the student chooses to use something outside, and the teacher hasn't said, please use this, then-
Right.
That's not on the teacher, yeah. This form is required when making a formal complaint, it will then be turned over to the supplemental material, is that what we're doing?
Hmm.
Okay, so.
Nope, it goes to the-
Before submitting this form.
Teacher and principal.
To stay to that other part, so we're gonna try to-
But does it go to them? Yeah, right there, it says that.
Before submitting this form, we discuss the resources, resource with the school librarian, and, okay, so that's-
Secondary notice, though.
No, it's right, the school librarian in the case of a library resource, or the teacher in the case of a classroom resource.
But this is strictly for the instructional materials, it's not-
But library books is listed as instructional materials.
Room tools.
Okay, except over here, we're just telling them to talk to the teacher or the principal.
I agree with Michelle, I think it's just the teacher, not the librarian.
I mean, that, because-
So then it would be and or, cause then that would be- So that's a principle. But then, how does it figure, I, I don't mean to interrupt, Michelle, I'm sorry, but then it figures in, you've got library materials in here, so you're talking about library books, so, where does the librarian come in?
Talking about library books through the use of instruction with the teacher.
I, I get that, but are we doing away with the objection form then?
No, no, two separate ones.
Okay, so we, the library will still have the two separate forms, got it, we'll just need to change this.
Yeah, because the library forms-
This is really how the teacher is going to use all of those materials, so the complaint would go to the teacher.
Is it, this, it's this process?
But if you're objecting to a book in the library, that's what this was for, objecting to a book in the library, if they're using this, they're not saying to come to the librarian.
Right, but they're still able to get to-
Because what we're doing is we're, they go to the policy first, and the policy's.
But if it's, but if it's not a book that they're using, but if it's not a book that's being used.
If you want to lodge a complaint, then you use this form. So I don't think the form should return back to policy, because I've already walked through it.
Right, okay.
I agree.
Yeah.
How they've already looked at it, they've gone to this man. If you object to your child using a particular, um, hold on. If you object to your child using a particular, um, and using a particular instructional material in the classroom, policy twenty-four, twenty-five parental rights provides a way to request an alternative resource for your child. Okay. Date, name, address, city, phones. Please check which of the following have described you.
So you're.
What we're going for. I should not be deep and tired.
The formatting on this is terrible. I, I, I struggled with it.
Parent guardian. Parent guardian of.
Of a district student.
Are these paper copies? Are they accessed online? Like, do, do people access them online if they're on?
Um, no.
No.
I'm trying to take that away. It's already deleted. Oh, it's a cell thingy. I hate Google cells.
I couldn't figure that out.
I don't know how.
I can fix it.
Of course you can. I think you've helped me before.
She wasn't here when I was struggling with it. I finally gave up.
See, if we were in Word, we'd be done with it by now. Just saying. Parent guardian of district student. Current student, but, oh, so it's the student doing it. Okay, well, can they just be a student? Do they have to be a current student? Okay, so I would think if they're a student, they're a current student.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's kind of repetitive.
Uh, district resident, district employee. Okay.
No, I'll fix the format for this.
Okay, well, here's the thing, over here in the policy. The district shall have on hand and available to the public. So we're letting the public inspect, and then we're having individuals objecting, which means it's the public, which means we need more boxes.
Well, but we have district residents, so you're either somebody who lives in the district. I mean, that could be everybody.
We could have someone from quarterly who doesn't live in the district. That's kiddo is here, then they would be the parent or guardian. Okay.
We were trying to get away from, um, somebody from East Washington wanting to come over, and, I mean, I don't know that anybody would be doing that, but.
Okay, but then the policy is opening that door, because it's individuals.
Can we say district residents?
I don't care what you say, I just.
Or parents and guardians.
Parents and guardians, yep, I see, I, yeah.
You see what I'm saying?
Yep.
Um, because if we have individuals here and we're saying that the public, so that's anybody and everybody outside. Because the public, it is statute, that's what it says in statute, so I just want them to match, so I don't know what we want.
Saying we say district resident.
Okay.
Parents or guardians, parents slash guardians.
Or district resident.
The public can view it, the public doesn't have, just a random public person doesn't have the option to file it. To complete the form, right?
So if we say district residence, that includes, uh, people with or without children. It does not include, well, no, it does include, forget that.
Doesn't include our open enrollment parents who don't live in our district.
But they would be parents.
But that doesn't say parents, it says district residents.
Could you say district residents, um, parents and guardians.
District employees that don't live in the district, does that sound better?
I think that's why we put individuals.
Correct, I would agree with you on that, because now we're lining it out.
I know.
But, or we just.
Well, but like you said, is it okay with anybody that wants to view it? But if you're Joe Blow from whoever that doesn't have a connection, you don't get to fill out the form that then requires a review and removal.
But Joe Blow does have the right, because the grievance to the public. So Joe Blow can come, that's what I'm saying. The, the law says the public has the right to look at it. Um, I don't necessarily know that.
Do they have the right to object to it?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
I don't know, but the public has the right to look at everything we got. So, uh, and up here, the whole purpose of the complaint is because it's your student.
Right.
It's not about anybody complaining, so because we're saying go talk to the teacher and the principal. Where was, oh, I know, I think it's here, yeah.
Can you say district patrons?
Then say patrons.
Because that includes every, I guess, no, it doesn't.
No, it wouldn't include, um, all enrollment.
Or.
But employees not in the district.
Instructional material can be challenged. We're just assuming it's from a parent. But it doesn't state that it has to be a parent, is my point. Because if someone came in and didn't like one of the curriculum materials we're using, they could file a complaint and make us look into it.
Yep, which has happened.
Right, so. What if?
I mean, please devil's advocate on this, if somebody came in and wanted to challenge something and asked us to look into it, is that a horrible thing?
Right, and even if they've marked other, now you know they aren't connected to our district anyway.
Things that were not appropriate, that's the reality that, you know, and if somebody, somebody.
Knows something that we, that nobody else does, because they've had experience with it or.
I don't. Now, the library law is really specific to parents, but this is just an open challenge. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't know that, um. I like these questions. Except for at the top, it should have been, if this material was used, if this material was used in the classroom, if this material. No, if this material, after material should be was used.
This material.
I thought that said is. Oh, is this material used in the classroom where you, yeah, that doesn't read right.
If this is material used in the classroom.
Okay.
Where you provided an alternative instructional resource.
If this is.
These are all ISBA questions.
Okay, so, what I'm thinking. Look at you, like, I don't know, newspaper, movie, digital resource, other magazine game. What if?
Do we need that information?
I don't think so. I think they're given a na, date, name, address, and all that good stuff. Maybe relationship to school.
And then we wouldn't even have to worry about trying to fix the format, you just take all the whole bad boy out.
Could you just put on the line that says relationship to school? Or to classroom, or to teacher? Does it matter? I don't know. I mean, I'm, yeah, I mean, for, um, challenging, um, oops, we've got to change. If it's open to the public, then I guess it doesn't matter. I'm just going to strike there instead of backspace, because, you know, who knows what I'm doing anymore.
The only statue I could find, as I was just perusing, was, um, the language specific to, that's, that's in there, that, that our curriculum materials would be available to the public. I can't find anything about challenging curriculum materials.
Me think that then.
Other than the library law.
They assume that anybody could challenge.
It doesn't even speak to it. I can't, I'm sure it is there somewhere. I can't find it right now, so.
So I suppose, I guess it doesn't matter, but if we, okay, so they're giving their name, blah, blah, blah. We're going to take all this out. I say we take all this out.
So do you want those two bottom ones there, though? Do you care if it was checked out from the library or in the classroom? Last two, you struck. That's where we said, like, does that matter?
Does it, yeah. Yeah, because I think if it's truly a library book issue, they're going to follow that process and go through use the library.
Yeah.
If it's, I've come in and I've looked at my kid's curriculum, or I'm, you know, the neighborly person, and I'm nosy, and I checked it all out, and I don't agree with this, they're just going to complete this form.
Could you just scroll up real quick, Michelle?
I cannot.
No, it's only available, okay.
Just above the, this one, so this is where, and this would cut out those spaces. If you object to your child using a particular, then the resource for your child, and it assumes that whoever filling this out, it's probably a child in that building, so the other stuff wouldn't be necessary.
Well, this is actually, that just speaks to, there's an avenue to be able to request an alternative resource, not to challenge.
Before they challenge it. Which fits to that question that asked, hey, was, did you have a discussion where you gave an alternate?
Yeah, yeah, before you did this.
So I think you're, you just have the date, the name, that you go down, you have the title of the book.
So I don't, but I don't know. I mean, I think this should be removed, because in order to get to this point, they would have already talked to the teacher and the principal. So that conversation of, I want my child to read a different book, has already occurred.
So other than this is referencing a policy they might not be aware of that says, you know, just so you know, there should be. We could make sure this policy is on twenty-five-twenty, the actual policy.
Cross-reference.
It's cross-reference on the bottom.
That's what I'm wondering, over here.
Yeah, you could put it in here somewhere.
I think that might be.
It would be more broken in the policy.
Because we delete the fact that says, please review twenty-five-twenty before submitting a complaint.
Yeah.
So if they haven't talked to the principal or the teacher first, then whoever they do talk to would refer the fact of the act. So they call each other and say, hey, Miss, I have a problem.
Would you put it right where, right where you were just talking, where it says, um.
That's what I do.
You already were on it.
Yeah, I'm thinking up here. It's like the first dealio. And then, so we're just saying, if you object to something, read this policy, you can get an alternative source. But then, if you're going to object, you can file there.
Keep reading.
Here you go.
You can object.
There we go.
We just need to reference it at the bottom.
Right. What was that number, uh?
Twenty-four, twenty-five parental rights.
Thank you. Of course, it'll go here.
Twenty-four.
Okay. Hey.
So then, you just have date, all your info. I don't, I think we said you could take off the applicable box.
I think so, too.
Yep.
Because you're going to put all that on there, author, producer.
So we think the MC is looking there. I don't know what I'm doing. Okay, so take these also?
No, no, just where it says other, yeah.
Okay.
Don't you guys think? And the title, what brought this resource to your attention?
Yeah.
Right, the questions I thought were great.
Yeah. And that, that forces context, otherwise people aren't just marking a box.
Right. They got to put a little thought into it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, you're requesting, um. Well, this is really just unique to what's happening in the classroom.
Can you, can it just be what action are you requesting and?
And then just a blank, so they can fill it in, or learning choices?
Retain it too. Why would we want it retained if they're asking?
In the original location.
I think a narrative, to your point, I think a narrative would be good. You could put a box there, or a line, or.
You could put a box there. Because we'll be here all night if I'm trying to figure this out. There are lots of things about Google, the driving markers, when I try to do.
I can't figure out them.
Do you guys want me to add a box, or you want me to just put lines?
The red.
Lines, because it matches the rest of everything.
I actually have a student that showed me how to do, like, a yes, no, by each thing, that I wanted to check off as I completed it. I was like, do the syllable, and the line one, so you can't fill it in, you can print it out. Or if a teacher.
You want me to make this fancy, make it thimble?
Okay, I'm all about the image.
I do like the fillable forms.
Well, yeah, because you can read what's been written.
I'm sure you both don't like me. Fillable, add box, and lines. Alex going out when she has to produce something, I'm like, I'm sure you don't like me.
So, then the form is done.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, so before I make it thimble and do all of that, can I, or, or, we have, are we going to go on to another policy, or are we going to stop?
We still have other forms.
Oh, the library forms.
We have the library forms.
We won't get through.
That's not a me job, that's a you job.
Oh, okay.
I'll work with Janelle on them specifically, because I feel like we would work on twenty-five-hundred, like.
That's what, and that's what these are, she and Melanie.
Yeah, so we'll just look at them together, and then I'll bring it back.
Make them fillable.
I wrote.
I didn't say it.
She's going to throw something at you. I wrote, Melanie and Janelle's forms, bring to, and send next policy meeting. So just recapping, we're sending out, um, I am going to add the procedure, the red protocol twenty-five-twenty into our student handbook. Um, we are just going to double check and make sure they're on twenty-five-hundred. Anything that says twenty-five, thirty, or forty, we change to twenty-five-twenty. Going out to survey is twenty-five-twenty and twenty-five-twenty F. You and I will work on twenty-five-hundred F. And then I will fix the bottom of twenty-five-twenty F and make that fillable.
So can, since Lynn's going to work with, uh, Janelle on the library-specific, um, forms, can we send those out also for survey, and then whatever we could take, or do you want to look at those, Michelle, before they go out to the community?
Right.
The, the, the library-specific forms.
Well, the policy was approved, so as long as the forums are in line with the policy, then we should just be able to go out.
You don't want to meet and do one more?
Not today, dear.
Lynn, I'm gone for the next month.
Okay.
So.
But is Melanie around?
I don't know if Melanie's going to be around or not, so we'd have to find out.
Okay, so can I work on it and then send it to you, and you can tell me a or n?
Yeah, yeah, because I'll have my computer with me, we'll be on the road, so.
Okay, are you leaving tomorrow?
No, um, we leave Sunday for Oregon, we're back for four days, and then I leave for California. Oh, yeah, tomorrow's fine.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. And like I said, I'm on the road, I've.
She's going to make some comment, I can see.
What?
I did hear the lip smack.
I know. Sometimes when the hamster's on the wheel, I don't sleep.
I hope we have fun, I never look at this policy again.
We've spent.
I really appreciate, um, your insight.
Everybody has been great.
When we stick with it, when it's hard, we get to a place where, yeah, I feel like that was very productive, like, it was helpful, it was a long process, but.
I just added this here because I'm like, what? So I think, yeah, I think that's marvelous.
When those go out for survey, and then we'll have.
Yeah.
That would be funny.
That'll be fun next week.
Then we go over those.
Sweet popcorn.
Is it every Thursday? Okay, I didn't know if it was stopping, like, parent.
No, I think we're gonna just keep going, because we still have so many we need to cover, and then, um, what I wanna do is, uh, in August, when we, parents start coming back, we send out another, like, is there a more appropriate time, is, so, just, I think every year, just asking people, because I have had people reach out, and some people say I like early afternoon, some people say evening, so I think asking the question every year is good, so that we have more people that wanna participate, so if this time doesn't work for people, they start another time that works better, or a different day, so I think it's, we should do that annually as part of our fall.
Agreed.
Did Jessica go through this already? Okay.
Yes.
So then, why is it here?
So send it up for sure.
Yep, and this is one of our, I'm pretty sure, Michelle, this is one of our annual policies.
I'm sure it is.
Yeah.
Your district tax, do we have a district tax advisor?
Uh-uh. No, they won't talk about taxes, because they're not trained to do that.
Why is this here?
ISBA. ISBA put it there. I don't think it has to be there.
Policy regarding district-owned vehicles provided to employees is for informational purposes only. Well, it says short little.
Yeah, it's for district.
Short vehicle. Do we have?
Uh, so, yeah, but like, facilities, um, will drive district, um, vehicles, or the person who does all of the in-district mail drives a district vehicle.
Are the food services vehicles, district, or are their food services?
They're not ours.
I wonder, they're, they're, they're gas, they're, they just know their vehicles.
They're company.
Building's all the time.
Actually, I don't know if that's true, because the board has to approve the, the expense of the money for the, I think that, I think the vehicles. Do vehicles belong to us, the ones we buy for food service, because the tables that we just bought belong to us?
They should, yeah, if we're buying, if we're spending the money for it, they're ours.
Then we actually.
Chartwell isn't walking away with all of the stuff we just bought.
I guess they need to say Lakeland.
They do.
That's why I asked them, because I said Lakeland.
I didn't even think of that, that those, and the tables are all ours, yeah.
Okay, so we have seven minutes.
You're gonna do this in seven minutes?
Wait, I, this one's easy.
That's what I said, I think it could be then, let's go.
The district owns and maintains certain vehicles, included among them are tickets, school buses, and vans. Does that mean that there's something outside of that?
Have cars, sometimes everything.
Buy properly authorized personnel for the district, for district business purposes. Any driver who receives a citation for a driving violation while operating a district vehicle shall personally pay all fines levied. All citations received while the driver is in a district, is a district employee, whether operating a district vehicle or not, must be reported and may result in disciplinary action up to and including termination. District bus.
Uh, can we back to that?
Yeah.
So if I'm a district employee and I'm driving my own car and I get a speeding ticket, do I have to actually let somebody?
It says while operating a district vehicle, so is the district buying your vehicle? Are we paying your?
Well, but it says all citations received while the driver is a district employee, whether operating a district vehicle or not.
No.
Yeah.
I have not recorded my speed.
I've switched weather out for a while.
Not even your husband.
No, nobody knows about those.
That would be more meaningful.
Any driver who receives a citation.
That's funny. All citations received by the drivers, a district employee, operating a district vehicle, must be reported.
And then take off or not? Okay, I haven't read all of this one, but is this a place where it would say, I mean, if there was an accident, then they have to go, I mean, we drug test, we would do all, like, shouldn't that say something on this one?
I don't know.
I mean, that's part of our procedure.
Yeah, okay, so obviously this is gonna take longer than we thought.
Turns out.
We'll just move on.
We, we just burst our bubble.
Okay, it's six twenty-five, so we'll just go ahead and prove it, end the meeting, and call it good.
Thank you.